Whatever works. Good evening. I'd like to welcome to Albany City Council Meeting, Wednesday, August 13th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. Would you please all join me in a pleasurable allegiance? Thank you very much for joining us. We have a roll call, please. City reporter?
Counselor Thompson?
Here.
Counselor Van Dremelin?
Present.
Counselor McLeod?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor McGee?
Present.
Counselor Newton?
Present.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. Next on tonight's agenda, adoption of the consent calendar. Counselors, do you have anything?
Move for adoption of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Item two, in that section, what was that? It was, that's part of it, right?
Yep.
Okay. Item four, public comment. Public comment is a time for Albany residents to speak and for counselors to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make decisions during public comment, but will take comments and requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council's rules and observe the standards of the same standards of decorum. If unable to do so, you'll be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When you get to the microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in the city of Albany, Oregon. Want to sign up? First on tonight's docket, public comment is John Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm John Robinson. I'm an Albany resident, Albany contractor, Albany business owner. I came tonight to state my opposition to the CET tax and the low-income rental housing tax exemption. I don't even know why the tax exemption is even being discussed as it would need to be have the approval of both Lynn County and the Albany School Board, and my information says that both those entities are never going to approve it. So for me, the tax exemption is effectively dead on arrival. Now, I provided extensive written testimony, and I hope you've taken the time to read it. I'm not going to verbally review my comments and my my written testimony tonight verbally, but instead, I'd like to take you back to the June 25th council meeting. During the business from the council, you can watch that video recording at 2:31. You will see and hear Councilman Thompson vent his frustration that the CET tax had been postponed. Pulled from that night's agenda, Councilman Thompson said, and I quote, "I believe there are five or six votes for that right now." He was referring to passing the CET tax ordinance. Now, it certainly sounds to me like Councilman Thompson has been deliberating outside of a public meeting. How else would he be able to make such a bold statement that there are five or six votes to pass it? Does he possess special mind-reading powers? To make matters worse, his statement proclaims that there are five or six counselors have made up their mind on the issue prior to a public hearing, and therefore, prior to listening to any input or any testimony that would be given at a public hearing. Not only did he implicate himself, but he also implicated most of the council. The citizens of Albany expect and deserve more from their elected city counselors. To Councilman Thompson, if you're unable to meet the minimum standards of the position, then you should immediately step down. The same goes for anyone else who's been a co-conspirator with him. When you pass this ordinance tonight, you will prove to everyone that the decision was made long before any public hearing, and deliberations happened outside of a public meeting in direct violation of Oregon's ethics laws. So, what are you going to do tonight? Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
I want to respond. I want to respond. I want to respond. No, I haven't. I, that's, that's just, okay. I want to ask my fellow counsel.
Counselor Thompson, your protocol says to wait till.
I'm asking my fellow counselors for exemption.
Protocol is not, is to wait.
Oh, that's just.
Next, next on tonight's agenda, our next person is Jamie Perry.
Hello. I'm Jamie Perry. I am a resident of Albany, Oregon. Sorry, can you hear me?
Use the mic, please.
Okay. My name is Jamie Perry. I am a resident of Albany, Oregon. I live in North Albany. I'm going to read a request for temporary moratorium on school zone citations. I will also be presenting this, and you all can have a copy if you'd like it as well. I'm not sure if that's appropriate to provide prior or after, but I'm happy to do so. I'm requesting a temporary moratorium on photo-enforced school zone citations issued near North Albany Road by Thornton Lake. The posted signage reflects the 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM school day enforcement window, yet ODOT Speed Zone Order Number 1028D, as in Delta, which was issued on February 26 of 1995, authorized as a 20 mile per hour speed zone limit only when children are present. It does not have a timeframe attached to it. So this discrepancy raises serious concerns under ORS 810180, which is speed limits must be supported by an engineering and traffic investigation and formal ODOT approval. ORS 8111052C enforcement linked to child present, not fixed hours. ORS 811111EA2, time-based enforcement valid only if signage is lawful and backed by a speed zone order. OAR 734020001020030, that's a mouse full, sorry about that. Local agencies must follow ODOT procedures before altering posted speeds. Albany City Engineer did confirm no flashing lights exist at this location, leaving enforcement reliance solely on the signage at place. Yet, no revised speed zone order has been published that supports the current posted hours, rendering enforcement legally unsupported. Additionally, issued citations lack documented review and signature by a police officer or authorized agent as required under ORS 8104371E and 2D. I respectfully request a temporary enforcement possible signage and authority are reviewed, a formal request to ODOT for a new engineering and traffic investigation, dismissal or mitigation of citations issued under this prior noncompliance in which I have stated. And I do want to just really state, I'm not opposed to school zone safety. I'm a mother. I'm not opposed. I'm just advocating for lawful, transparent, and procedurally sound enforcement that reflects both community safety and state standards. I'm happy to provide any documentation you would request.
Right into the county recorder, city recorder, please. Thank you. Next up was Heather F. Fremson, Emson. Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Can you, how do you pronounce it?
Ephrimson.
Ephrimson, thank you.
Mayor Johnson and members of the council. For the record, my name is Heather Ephrimson. I am a senior construction manager for Hayden Homes, where I have worked for more than 20 years. I also serve as the vice president of the Western Oregon Builders Association. I live here in the valley. Albany is my home, and I have raised my family here. I'm here tonight representing the Western Oregon Builders Association, which has more than 200 members, residential and commercial contractors, developers, trade partners, and affiliated associates across Lynn, Benton, and Lane Counties. Our position has not changed. We oppose the construction excise tax, and we oppose the low-income rental housing property tax exemption. I am also here to speak on behalf of Hayden Homes. Hayden Homes has proudly built in Albany since 2003, delivering just over 1,000 homes to local residents. Our mission is simple. Bring homes to the market that areas median wage earner can afford. Earlier this year, we opened our Meadowlark Community in South Albany with homes starting at $335,000, attainable for families earning about 85% of the area median income, and an achievement that's becoming harder to deliver in today's market. We redesigned this community layout based on recent state legislation, adjusting our product mix to focus on homes that hardworking Albany families can afford. Every dollar matters, and that is why we oppose the construction excise tax. Adding a tax increases the cost of building a home, a cost that inevitably gets passed on to our buyers. When housing affordability is the number one concern in Oregon, this tax works against the goal of delivering market rate homes that are attainable in our community. However, we do support the ordinance to allow deferral of SDC charges until issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Providing this option brings more flexibility to the market, which can encourage greater participation in home building and ultimately help stimulate housing production here in Albany and across the state. I appreciate the time and commitment you dedicate to serving this community. I urge you to vote against implementing a construction excise tax, against low-income rental housing property tax exemption, and in support of the SDC deferral so that we can continue providing homes families here can afford. Housing affordability isn't solved by adding costs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jim Thicpen, and what's your other, oh, Mennonite Village.
I'm Jim. I'm Jim Thicpen of Mennonite Village. Been there for nine years, and of course, that is in Albany. Related to our written presentation now in your hands, Mennonite Village and residents of Mennonite Village, thank you for addressing the needs for proper placement of our recently purchased signs for use on Columbus Waverly. And a very special acknowledgement goes out to Ron Harris, Captain Jerry Drum, and Councilperson Marilyn Smith. Thanks for their guidance. Success is hopefully near. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next is Brad Dennis.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and counselors. I'm Brad Dennis. Yes, I live in the city of Albany. And tonight, I want to talk a little bit about North Albany, and partly about the traffic cameras near the school. You may have read Hassel Haring's blog recently where he mentioned that there had been $150,000 in fines assessed during the first three months of operation. When I spoke at a council meeting last year, I suggested that the funds from the traffic cameras be placed into a separate fund where we could track the money coming in and the expenses related to administering this program. And I doubt that's been done, but tonight, I'd like to suggest a use for the funds that have been collected related to the traffic camera in North Albany. There's a traffic and safety problem surrounding the North Albany Middle School area, and there's a bottleneck related to kids getting dropped off at the middle school. West Thornton Lake Drive dead ends at the middle school, and there's only one way in and one way out, and so traffic backs up onto North Albany Road. The North Albany Neighborhood Association Transportation Committee would like to propose that Thornton Lake Drive be extended onto Quarry Road. A couple of weeks ago, Benton County Commissioner Gabe Shepherd held a town hall meeting at the North Albany Park, and I had suggested this to him also because currently Quarry Road is a county road. It's not maintained by the city. I suggested that Quarry Road should have sidewalks added to both sides and bring it up to city standards and then turn it over to the city. I'm hopeful that the city would be supportive of a plan such as this, and involving the city, the county, and the school district. Would it be possible to have a meeting of the parties for the purpose of brainstorming how to make this a safer area for the school kids and to make traffic flow more smoothly through the area? Could this maybe be a priority of the Transportation Advisory Committee? Would the council be willing to back an ordinance that would dedicate traffic funds, traffic fines, from the North Albany Camera to this project to help make it feasible and possible? Thank you.
Thank you, Red. Next is downtown executive director, Lisa Grotto.
Good evening. Lisa Grotto, Executive Director, Albany Downtown Association. Just going to give you a quick downtown update. I'm going to start with saying what a wonderful event it was on Friday night. Thank you all for coming. That was the Craft Brew SmackDown. This was the 11th one. Tried to say annual, but then we remember there were COVID breaks, but let's not go there. So we had 20-plus breweries. We had upwards of 400 people in attendance and great feedback from all, and a wonderful fundraiser for the downtown association as well as Rotary. So thank you again. We're working on Operation Christmas Tree. That's our initiative to bring a full and professionally lighted tree to downtown Albany. There have been site visits to Tolan Farms, and a couple of trees have been identified as potential candidates. We've gained support from Republic Services, from Warehouser, Pacific Power, Tolan Farms, Corvallis Tree, Ram Trucking, and others, Bossard Trucking. So a number of people have stepped up to help figure out how to get it out of North Albany and downtown. So we're quite excited. If you want to be part of that, you have an opportunity to purchase a flat ornament that will be hung in the streets of downtown Albany, much like the mom flowers. These can be titled with whatever holiday greeting suits you in any language or form, as long as we can translate it back to something appropriate. We will be delighted to entertain your ideas. The cost of those is $100, $120 if a business wants to put a logo on it. There's other sponsorships available as well. So we're very excited to partner with the city and Tolan Farms and all these other folks to have a big full tree this year. And Warehouser is completely on board and supportive. I want to make sure everybody's invited to the Excellence in Downtown Revitalization Awards. This is the downtown association's award event. It is happening on Monday, August 25th, so coming up very quickly. Looking for RSVPs this week. Information's in the newsletter, which I have available after this event. Lots of nominees. It's going to be a wonderful event. Also remind you that Oregon Main Street is coming to town. They're having, or we're having, the state conference here, so that will be exciting. The early bird discount to attend ends on Friday, so if you have any interest, I suggest that you check the Oregon Main Street page and get that information, or just reach out to me and I'll connect you with that. Carnival at the Carousel is on August 16th, and that's also the closure on the Albany Passport. And I wanted to mention that ACT's presentation of Dreamwork Shrek Jr. opens on Friday. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, next, item five, action items on your docket. Your agenda is, A, ordinances, housing implementation, policy proposals, housing construction excise tax, and low-income rental house, housing property tax exemption. Pages are 21, 28 through 37 in your packet. Do you, does councilmate have questions?
Mayor and counselors, I would like to just clarify a few things. There was a public hearing back in December, December 11th, 2024, and all of the testimony that was received for that public hearing, and any additional information was provided to you for this evening. And this is just the second reading of, if you, of the ordinances, and if you choose to adopt the CET ordinance, you will need to determine the rates for the resolution. Those are up to you, and then the effective date if you choose to move forward. The only other thing I would mention is that the low-income rental housing tax exemption program is only, it doesn't require approval of other taxing jurisdictions, so the city could, it can just be the city's taxes. And it's, again, just the city tax. It doesn't include any of the bond or levies. And some of the examples that are in the packet show you that there would still be revenue coming in for those sources. The information that I shared with you on Monday night, I did send a email correcting some of that information or clarifying it. There were questions about whether the tax exemption program would qualify, would, if properties, existing properties would be eligible for the tax exemption program. And I made the assumption, without reading the language right before the meeting, that, well, if you're adding new affordable housing units, converting, that that would be the case, but actually only applies to housing constructed after you adopt the provisions of the state statute. So that means that the scenarios that were brought up could occur, but only if the housing was put in place after, if you, if you adopt the ordinance after that date. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions before you consider these items.
Is it retroactive? So it's not retroactive, that's what I'm hearing. Right, you couldn't go, say somebody started now, and it was adopted tomorrow, that would not count.
Yeah, so I think any buildings that are new after today, I'm not, and we could add a definition of construction to the, there wasn't one in the ORS. I searched for it, but I, I don't think that means you had to pull a building permit after today, but that the units were completed after the date that if you would choose to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I hate to belabor the point, last point you made. So, to get it in my head, are you talking about, so an entity, it's not so much the exemption. Could we use these dollars? Like, so after a point of time, the pool will add up, and there will be projects requested. And if they were to be approved, could you use that money as an entity to purchase an already existing building with these CET, with a grant of these CET dollars?
Okay, two different programs. So, the low-income rental housing tax exemption only applies to developers of affordable housing, and that's affordable to households at 60% or below median income in the first year. They would apply to the city for the city's tax exemption, and it could be for-profit or nonprofit. So that the housing CET and the commercial CET that would collect money potentially for a future housing fund, there are some specific requirements on how those funds would be spent, outlined in state law, and those are identified, I think, in your packet, and we covered those on Monday. But if you choose to consider adopting this tax over the next six months to a year, we would be working to identify specific programs and how to use those funds. Most cities use them for affordable housing, which is the hardest to make pencil in communities, especially that below 60%. The, there is a requirement to offer incentives to developers for housing, and the city gets to determine what its needs are and how it wants to use those funds. The commercial funds, half of those funds collected are actually unrestricted, wouldn't have to be used on housing, 50% on housing, but it's, it's very flexible. So we would be working with you and maybe the Community Development Commission, if that's your wish, to determine the highest needs to be good stewards of the money and do the most that we could with money raised and address the most needed housing types.
So am I understanding we're supposed to read it second time and title only?
Right. And then, I mean, city attorney can answer that question, but, and then you would decide whether you would then be able to vote on the ordinance. Reading it a second time and title only doesn't adopt it.
Correct. I get that.
Either ordinance.
But if it's not unanimous, we have to come back later, right?
No, this is the second reading. The first reading of these ordinances occurred back in December. This is just the second reading. It's just been a lag time, so I think people may have forgotten that we've already had a public hearing and a first reading. Yep. And one other thing I did want to bring up, and I'm sorry, I'll stop. I did research the school CET, and it's actually $1.63 per square foot on residential construction and 82 cents per square foot on non-residential construction, just to give you an idea.
Okay. So I don't need a motion. I can just go ahead and ask the city attorney? That's what I understand.
Yeah, whenever you ready for me to read it.
Okay. Would the city? Would the city attorney read the ordinance a second time and title only?
An ordinance submitting the Albany Municipal Code AMC Title III by creating Chapter 3.09 and enacting a housing construction excise tax.
Is there any discussion, council? Would the council like to make a motion to adopt?
Yeah, I do have. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight, and it was kind of discussed with the presentation there. Within this, the parts of, that give an incentive are not defined as giving to a quote-unquote "affordable" housing. And I guess the answer is, as I listened to Anne, is we're going to have to be vigilant as the process is set up, because I think the idea that this money went for housing writ large, that's not affordable as defined, the, however you want to define it, the 60% of AMI, or 50% or 80% of AMI, I suppose, but that's defined affordable housing. And I'm going to support this, because, you know, I've been very critical of the way we have tried to attack housing only and singly through regulatory changes, very significant regulatory and zoning changes. But this is a chance to really do some good with, like I said, defined affordable housing, which is, it's very difficult. It's very difficult as, for an entity to do affordable housing while holding a loan or debt. And this is one part of the puzzle that can help them do projects that really go towards what we all understand as affordable housing.
Okay. Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance for the second time in title only? Have we done that?
Yeah.
No, we, we?
We need a motion to adopt.
Did we do second?
Yeah.
Yeah, with a term, let's try, I'll move down the page. Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So, Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Yeah.
Or point of clarification, I guess. So, right now, we're only discussing the ordinance to amend the municipal code to establish the CET.
Correct.
But the resolution to set the rates for the CET will be discussed and adopted separately?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what I understand, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
No, we don't have.
Have we just made a motion?
No, we made a motion.
Okay, y'all got me confused. All right. Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll move to adopt the ordinance.
Third, second?
I second that motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
Thank you, council. Is that, that was both of them, right? The, the, okay. So, both are adopted?
No, the resolution still needs to be discussed.
The ordinances, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, the two ordinances, sure, okay.
Now, the resolution. Where's the resolution?
Mayor.
Yes.
I believe we're going to need a second read of the LRT ordinance as well, unless you're going to do the resolution next.
Well, let's set the rate, and then we'll do the LRT. Council, any discussion on the rate? Council, Anne?
So, just to clarify, this is what we spoke of on Monday when we were talking about the 1% and the 1.5%. And what we discussed Monday was 1% for the residential and 1.5% for the commercial. Is that, is that my correct understanding of the discussion Monday?
So, on Monday, that is what was direction given to staff to bring forward back in December. There has been some time. There have been some concerns. You can decide to use any rate, but the maximum rate for residential is 1%. That is what most cities use. You don't have to do 1%. And then, the commercial maximum, there is no restriction on that. Most cities do a 1%, except Corvallis is a 1.5%. You can choose to do rates lower. And so, if you remember, and it's in your packet, there is a table that, a chart that shows you projected revenue. And another option is you could phase in, you could do, this is an example, you could do a half percent, you know, in year one to two, or year one, and increase to a full percent, or something like that. You could do increments. We would need to amend the resolution for that. And then, we had recommended initially in December that you consider an effective date a few months from now. And you could have the different effective dates for the residential CET versus the commercial CET. And I apologize, on Monday, I didn't come up with a proposal for you, because this is really your decision. I just let you know what the direction initially was with a former, you know, slightly different council and the work that we had done last year. So, it's up to you.
Does someone want to propose a rate?
Counselor Van Gemmeyn? Yeah. So, when I had first reviewed the materials, being, so being new to the council, like, I wasn't part of the discussion when the initial guidance was given. I had a lot of questions, and I was honestly leaning against supporting this writ large. But based on some of what I've learned about what we can do with the CET revenue, particularly unlocking external funding with local contributions toward these kind of projects, with what to me seemed like relatively small local contributions unlocking large amounts of state and other funding, that seems like we'd be doing a disservice to our community to not do this, which is why I voted for the resolution to adopt the CET. Where I have trouble with is levying a 1% CET, which is the maximum allowed by statute for residential, and levying it all at once. With the number of taxes and fees that we're being asked to consider right now, I don't, I don't feel good about that 1%, 1.5%. And I don't feel good about doing it all at once. I really like the idea of how Eugene, I believe it was, did theirs, where they phased implementation. So, what I would like to propose, I move that we amend the resolution to have a three-year phase-in instead of implementing all at once, and to phase in beginning January 1st of 2026, so targeting that a few months from now, not trying to do this right immediately, but 0.25% per year culminating in 3/4 of a percent for residential by the time we reach year three, and 1/3 of a percent per year culminating in 1% for commercial.
I like that, but can I get all those numbers again?
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure I have, that sounds, I like a multi-use.
This is increments that you're speaking of, right?
Okay, I like the increment, okay.
Yeah. I move that we adopt the resolution, amending it to have a three-year phase-in, effective for Phase One, January 1st of 2026, a quarter of a percent per year culminating in 3/4 of a percent for residential by the time we reach year three, and then 1/3 of a percent per year culminating in 1% by year three for commercial.
May I offer a friendly amendment to that?
I'm going to.
That's his motion. We have to react to that motion.
I'm sorry?
He's made a motion. We have to act.
It hasn't been, it hasn't been seconded, though, so she can offer a friendly amendment.
I would like to offer an amendment, actually. I take concern with the phrasing of 1/3, because it's 0.3333.
Right. That's why I phrased it as that, instead of 0.333 repeating.
Right. Can we just change that to 30, 33%? Change the wording, the language?
It would be 0.33%.
Or, I'm sorry, 0.33%. Can we change the wording? Instead of 1/3, change it to 0.33?
But then, by year three, we would get a 0.99% or, yeah, 0.99 instead of a 1%. My goal was to get to a 1, an even 1 instead of.
We can, we can say that in year three, it becomes 1%.
So, 0.34 in one, at, in year three.
0.33 to 0.66 to 1.
It makes it easier romantically for contracts, correct?
I think it doesn't.
We have an attorney sitting right there.
Yeah. Sean, what's your take on this?
I think either one of them would work. I think, I mean, being 1/3, I mean, we're going to get to 1 in three years. Who's, is it Gina or would do the calculations on this? I mean, I think that we'd be okay. It wouldn't go forever, the 0.33. I think they could cut it off at, you know, 0.33.
Yeah, mathematically, that gets you to 1 by year three.
Exactly. So, we could do that. I think, I think either one will work, but if you want to have it rounded at even 1 at year three, then the 1/3 is probably easier for finance to deal with. But I get it. I do understand what you're saying.
Simple as 33, 33, and 34.
How about that? Okay with you?
Sure. 33, 33, and Carolyn? 33, 33, and 34 work for you?
Yes.
Or 0.33, 0.33, and 0.34, rather?
Yes. Just, just to clarify, to make it easier.
Works a little bit.
This, this isn't residential. Which one was this?
Commercial.
Commercial, okay.
Yes. So, councilor, please restate.
Okay. So, I, I'm gonna start from the top. I move that we adopt the resolution with an amendment for a three-year phased timeline, beginning, so effective January 1st, 2026, with each year adding 0.25% for residential culminating in a rate by year three of 3/4 of a percent, so 0.75, and then 0.33 in year one and two, and then an increase of 0.34 in year three to get to a rate of 1% for commercial.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you will need a second reading of the LRT ordinance.
I know, that's next. So, now we'll do the second reading of the LRT. Will the city attorney read the ordinance a second time in title only?
An ordinance adopting the provisions of Oregon Revised Statute's ORS Sections 303.5.5 through 307.535 to establish a low-income rental housing property tax exemption.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance? Is there any discussion? I'm not hearing anything.
If there's not a motion, then it would, it's dead. It's dead, yeah.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda, ordinance, Albany Municipal Code amendments, system development charge deferrals, Matthew Rutgers, pages 58 through 80 in your packet.
Good evening, mayor and councilors. This is the package that we went over on Monday for SDC deferral, before you, there'll be an ordinance for your consideration as well as a rate resolution, also for your consideration if you do choose to adopt the ordinance. Here to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions? Okay. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance the first time in title only?
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code Section 10.01.080 Sewer System Development Charge, Chapter 15.16 System Development Charge, and Chapter 15.20 Park System Development Charge.
Is that it? Okay. Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance for the second time in title only?
So, moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance for the second time in title only?
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code Section 10.01.080 Sewer System Development Charge, Chapter 15.16 System Development Charge, and Chapter 15.20 Parks System Development Charge.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you, council. Next is a resolution, sole source procurement of, oh, thank you, Director.
There's a
Resolution.
Resolution for the fees associated with the STCs.
Counsel, can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. So, in your packet, there is a resolution on page, I just had it in front of me, 78, correct. And that's going to establish $150 application fee, excuse me, and a 2% administrative recovery fee for folks that do elect to defer the STCs that gets applied to them. We just need to establish that rate through resolution. Happy to answer any questions about that.
I'll move to adopt the resolution on page 78 of the packet.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, resolution, sole source procurement of ultrafiltration membranes for the Albany-Millsburg Water Treatment Plant. Scott LaRocque will be speaking with us today.
Evening, council. I'm Scott LaRocque, the water superintendent. What you have in front of you is a resolution, a resolution for special, for sole source procurement, not special procurement, of MemCor brand membranes for our AM, or Albany-Millsburg Water Treatment Plant. These membranes are the essential component that we use to filter the water at the plant. They are a wear part, so they do have to be replaced, and we plan on replacement every 10 years. This membrane in particular is the membrane that the plant was designed around, and it's been working very well for us. I will say, we did try using a different membrane. Some of you, councilors, a couple of you guys were here when we talked about that, but it was supposed to be a direct replacement membrane. It was supposed to work, promised a lot of really good performance, and it just didn't pan out. So, that, for that reason, we are actually replacing three cells over the next three to four years, depending on the timing, rather than four, because we had to replace that cell of membranes of the different type much, much earlier than we had planned or anticipated because of that failure. One cell in particular is kind of on the front end of the plant, and we're replacing it a year earlier, so nine years, and we're swapping it with another cell that was going to be due at 10 years. We're going to try and push it to get 11 years out of it. And that's due to the turbidity issues from the drawdown, which we've talked to council before about. We do, like I said, plan on replacement of these membranes. We do set money aside in a reserve fund every year for that. So, there is enough money in that fund for these replacements over the next three to four years. Are there any questions?
I have a comment.
Counselor Smith.
This memo was especially compelling and frightening and expensive.
Yes.
And I appreciated the storytelling, which was just laying out the facts of what's going on out there. It's a shame that it's happening the way it is, but I'm all for doing the right thing this time.
Thank you. Any councilors, any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution as presented on pages 84 and 85 of the packet.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, on the nitrogen, sole source procurement of ultrafiltration, we just did that one. All right. Resolution, special procurement for physician advisory services, Ray Woolridge, pages 86 to 89 in your packet. I like this one. Good seeing you.
Good evening, mayor and council. The item before you this evening is a request for an exemption from competitive bidding for the physician advisory services. All EMTs and paramedics in our department are required to operate under the license of a physician. The physician advisor plays a critical role in our operations by approving medical protocols, providing ongoing monthly providing ongoing monthly training, and offering guidance on a wide range of EMS-related topics. We are proposing to contract with a physician who is currently employed at the Albany General Hospital. Partnering with a Samaritan Health Services employee will help strengthen our relationship with Albany General and ensure we have a strong advocate for our department within that organization. The annual cost for this physician advisory service is twenty-four thousand. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Counsel, any questions?
I just would comment that it's nice to be able to shop close to home, and this sounds like a real bargain price.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
And I like the idea of having a physician providing that guidance and advice, so, thank you. Counsel?
I move that we adopt the resolution on pages eighty, eighty-eight and eighty-nine?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Resolution passes. Next is cooperative procurement agreement, HDAC, purchase of closed-circuit television, CCTV inspection van. Jeff Gill and Craig Prosser, pages ninety-nine through ninety-two, ninety to ninety-two in your packet. Like this.
Good evening, mayor and councillors. I am Craig Prosser, the wastewater superintendent. With me is Jeff Gill, the wastewater collection supervisor. You have before you a memo and resolution concerning the cooperative agreement purchase for a CCTV van for the collection system. Currently, our van is thirteen years old and at the end of its useful life. If approved, we will place the current van in surplus and follow surplus property guidelines, and that money will help replenish the capital equipment fund that we are using the money for this purchase from. So our staff recommends the approval, and we are here for any questions if you have.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Counselor McLeod?
Thank you. What is the life expectancy of, of a new van if the, the old one only lasted thirteen years?
Well, because of the specialized equipment that we use in the sewer, we, we try to stagger these things out to about fifteen years generally. And there's a lot of lag time on the building of these things. So we get this approved, we put in a PO, it could be next year before we actually get the new van in to get it replaced. And so what we're, we're trying to do this so like, we're not trying to replace like a Vector truck, which is more expensive even so than the CCTV van. And we have two Vector trucks, you know, so we try to stagger these things out over the years. Because of the harsh nature of sewer, this equipment wears out really fast. We use it, you know, five days a week, and it's constantly under pretty rough conditions. So that's what we try to do, so it's not a, you know, buying millions of dollars of equipment in one year, so.
Thank you.
Counsel, any comments? I think this, that there's none. My comment is, is that I think the, the city, the citizens that live in this city would appreciate, will appreciate using this van. Better technology, you can actually find cracks and damaged pipes faster, probably with the, with the better technology. So I think this is a great purchase. Thanks for being proactive in getting this done. And now, will there be training as part of this for, for the new technology?
Well, most of our staff already know how to operate these, this equipment. There's a few things that are a little new, the lateral launch, which will be able to help engineering with some stuff, which will be some additional savings for the city. But most of our staff already knows how to operate the equipment, so.
Right, thank you. Counselor?
I move to adopt the resolution on page ninety-two of the packet.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Your motion pa, your resolution passes.
Thank you.
Next is approval intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with National Police Policy Consensus Center at Portland State University for Civic Academy, Matthew Harrington, pages ninety-three to ninety-eight in your packet.
Great. Good evening, mayor and councillors. I am Matt Harrington. I am part of the communications and engagement team here at the city. You have before you tonight a resolution to authorize an intergovernmental agreement with Portland State University's National Policy Consensus Center to facilitate a six-week Albany Civic Academy for this year and next year. Listed fiscal years in the memo, but it will be this fall and next fall. As attached in the, or as noted in the attached scope of work, in addition to a tour of city operations, this program will help folks build skills in consensus building and civic literacy. And it introduces participants to future engagement opportunities with the city, namely, like joining a board and commission and showing what other options are available to folks. So also of note, each cohort will work on a project, and that will result in a presentation to you later in the year around November. So we're pretty excited about that, even though we're still going through that process. And we have been waiting to get this IGA approved over the break. But we've been doing work with our people at PSU to kind of get the ball rolling. So hopefully tonight, with your approval, we can like get moving on that and get applications ready to go.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this the only school that had it? Was it nothing else that was close to this area?
So we did a lot of research on folks who did these sort of civic academies. PSU is one of the most highly regarded. They're internationally recognized for their work. And based off their successful working relationships with other communities like Hillsborough, Hermiston, Sisters, we, we felt they were the strongest to go with, so.
Councillors, any other comments or questions? Counselor McLeod?
I think this sounds like a great opportunity for public engagement. And I think we, we can use this as a tool to get, to get people into our citizen advisory groups, and I, I really like that idea. So thank you. I support this.
We're really excited to have the possibility of bringing this on, so.
Yeah, just to tag along, it seems like a great opportunity. The material presented by Portland State seemed like it's substantial. Seems like it's, I even want to say rigorous examination of local government. So I think it's, it's not only an opportunity, it's worthwhile. It would be worthwhile for folks.
As a caution to applicants, there is expected homework during
Even better.
The off times, so.
Nice.
I'll add a comment. I did a little, I did a little research on this myself some months ago, and I kept hearing back from various corners of the state of Oregon, you ought to see what they're doing in Hillsborough. So I
Hillsborough's been working with PSU for a number of years now. And they've even taken it further and kind of taken the core of what NPCC has provided and added to that. And so, you know, we have kind of those same goals, but we're just starting, so.
We can benefit from their experience.
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you.
Fantastic. Counsel?
I'll move to adopt the resolution on page ninety-four of the packet.
Second.
I have a motion and seven seconds. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you, council. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay. Adopt by motion, item G on the packet. Actually, yeah, G on that section. Award of contract for SD two five, twenty-five dash zero one, Belmont Avenue Storm Drains, cured in-place pipe, Bailey Smith, pages ninety-nine to one oh two in your packet. You changed your hair.
Good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and provide the report for civil engineer one, Bailey Smith. I'm Stacy Bel Castro, city engineer with the Public Works Department. For this item on the agenda, staff is recommending that council by motion award a contract to construct storm drain improvements on Belmont Avenue to CNL Water Solutions of Chesterfield, Missouri. This project will use cured-in-place pipe, a trenchless technology, to rehabilitate over two thousand feet of storm drain pipe in the Belmont Avenue neighborhood. And our recommendation is that council award the project. I can answer any questions if there are any.
Missouri?
It's a specialized construction method, and so a lot of the contractors that we see bid specifically on cured-in-place pipe are national. There are contractors located in Oregon that bid on our projects. We benefited on this particular project. CNL was awarded a contract in Corvallis, and so they were able to lower their mobilization costs.
So they're already here. Any questions, council? I, I guess I saw a documentary on stream engineering about this cured-in-place. It goes down through and it hardens up like a shell inside.
It's a, it's a felt tube, and then resins used to cure the pipe and, are the felt. And it's basically, you're able to install a new pipe inside a old existing pipe that may have holes in it.
So it's double protected, basically, from, okay. Counsel, we have any action here?
Move to approve the contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Item H is adoption by motion, license to occupy right-of-way for the Midnight Village to install two radar speed signs. Chris Bailey and Officer Jerry, Captain Jerry Drum. Items one oh three to one thirteen in your packet. And there was also some stuff sent in for public comment, from public comment.
Well, Jerry and I are looking at each other because we don't know who's gonna talk. So there's a memo in your packet. And I'll just cover, you heard some public comment about the plan to install these signs. And the reason we have to issue a license to occupy their right-of-way is because the signs are not as effective if they're behind the sidewalk on private property. So these are slated to be installed in the planter strip in designated areas. And that's why the license to occupy. So if you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
So I did have one. Lady spoke earlier, I think her name was, Amy Perry, regarding the state and their rules. Does this, have we done that research?
Oh, no, these are not enforcement signs. These are the kind that
School warning sign?
They just show your speed and underneath the speed limit sign. So they're just informative. There's no enforcement with these signs.
Okay, thank you. Counsel?
I think it sounds great.
I, I move to approve the license to occupy right-of-way for the speed signs.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have informational briefings and staff reports. Who's going to present that?
We have none tonight, mayor.
We have none tonight? Okay, you just left it there. Now, business from the council. I started over there last time. I'll, I'll start with Counselor Newton this time.
Okay. All right, so recently, I had a constituent reach out about a question about one of our red light cameras, the one that's active, the North Albany one, specifically asking if the signage met the placement requirements outlined in Oregon law. The concern was whether the speed feedback signs where it says, you know, speed limit twenty miles per hour, school zone, seven AM to five PM, were posted the correct distance before the photo radar units, which is required in ORS eight one zero dot four four four, which was amended fairly recently by HB forty-one oh nine, which has been in effect since June sixth, twenty twenty-four. So to summarize, I then asked my neighbor, John Boydston, thank you, John, since he works construction, if I could borrow his one hundred-foot measuring tape. So this is a very, I didn't have one that was a hundred yards, but we went with what we had. And I went and measured with Counselor Thompson, because we kind of do everything as we can, because we're both Ward one. But, okay, so to summarize, the law states that in jurisdictions operating a fixed photo radar systems, citations for speeding may be issued only if a sign displaying the driver's current radius, displaying like the speed, is posted between one hundred yards and four hundred yards before the photo radar unit. So we went out and measured the distance going north. It was two hundred and twenty yards, totally well within one hundred yards to four hundred yards. The other sign coming southbound, and again, I, I'm using only this one hundred foot, and I had to use chalk and mark where I, where it went to. So I might be off by like a foot. But we tried being as, as careful as possible. It was like a hundred degrees outside. But the one coming down, so it only measures at about sixty-five yards. So it is not in compliance per that ORS. So I'd love for staff to check into that. So I want to make sure also with the city attorney that I'm interpreting the statute correctly. And if so, I want to direct staff to look into this matter, ensure that all of our fixed photo radar locations meet legal requirements. I have a few other things I want to discuss too, but I wanted to just make sure this is good.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely look at, at, you said one, or eight one oh point four four four?
Correct.
And House Bill forty-one oh nine.
If you want, I can read it off to you, because I believe
Yeah, I, I recall looking at the statutes, because these have come up before, that they, I think them, it's a hundred yards, so.
And it's
And you said the northbound is two hundred and something?
Um, yeah, northbound is two hundred and twenty, which is totally within the limits.
Right, right.
Um, the other one is sixty-five yards. So think about this. You're coming down from the roundabout, right? It says forty miles per hour, first thing that you see. And then you go down a little further, and it says photo enforcement. You're like, all right, cool, I'm going forty miles an hour. I'm good. And then you continue going, and then right before, not a hundred yards, it's sixty-five, which is like thirty-five percent less than what is needed. You're like, oh, no.
You're right on top of it.
Yeah, so it's not fair. So I wanted to direct staff to just double-check my measurements, and I'll return my neighbor's giant tape measure, which is so fun to use. And, okay, so the next item that I have, I wanted to ask about. Peter, you and I, when we had our one-on-one, you mentioned that someone be coming before the council to talk about the flashing light requirement. Is that, can we have someone come before the council and talk about that?
Say, say again the question.
We, we were going to ask about the flashing light requirement, or what it would cost and the parameters, or if it's needed.
Right, well, there's so many, so many issues that have been raised that staff aren't looking into that. We will bring it back probably on the twenty-seventh. And there's also some, as you heard from the lady who spoke in Business from the Public, there are some questions about what we have found to be conflicting policy guidance from ODOT, which we're trying to rectify or clarify.
That might require the flashing lights if it's within a school zone. Okay. Excellent. I'm looking forward to hearing more on that. And then lastly, well, also, kudos to Parks and Recreation. Loved Fun in the Park today. All the, all the good things there, but more serious item. I want to open a discussion tonight removing the current age restrictions for, of twenty-five years and under for our traffic school diversion program for Class C and Class D citations. So I want to be very specific. Class D violations are the least severe traffic offenses, things like going one to ten miles over the speed limit or certain things like that. And then Class C violations are just one level higher, things going at eleven to twenty miles per hour. So right now, our diversion program, so where someone can take traffic school and have their ticket dismissed, it only applies to first-time offenders who are twenty-five years of age and under. And I think it's time we consider making it available to first-time offenders of any age. So it's applied consistently and helps encourage safe driving for everyone. So we've just brought on the new traffic camera up in North Albany, and we're gonna have two more online, I think, in the next month. So, and I believe back in November, we added another staff member for the courts to handle ticket processing, and we also increased our municipal judge's contract by sixty percent, adding an additional day. And we also raised her salary to a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a year. I did have a chance to speak with Judge Mayer earlier this week, and she does not oppose this change. Our courts have been very busy with folks fighting these tickets, taking up a lot of staff time. I feel that if we had this option, a lot of these folks are first-time offenders. They're gonna do the diversion. They're gonna do this traffic school. And expanding access to traffic school should reduce that burden to staff while still holding people accountable through education. So I, and I just want to be really clear, this isn't a free pass. Folks that do traffic school, they still pay a small fee for the city, as well as they pay the cost for traffic school. And this simply offers an educational alternative to a court process and a permanent mark on someone's record for a first offense. So would like to have a little bit of discussion if there is support. I'd like to make a motion to remove the age restriction so that anyone of any age can complete the diversion program if they receive a ticket in Albany, one of the red light or speeding tickets specifically, for their first qualifying Class C or Class D violation.
I would like to hear from the judge before we did anything.
Mr. Kidd, did you have a chance to also speak with Judge Mayer?
I have not spoken to Judge Mayer about this particular issue. I was, I was there a lot today. We had some We had some fireworks outside of court here. So I was just talking to the city manager about this too. If, if the council creates an ordinance that provides for that, then the judge will follow that ordinance. And I, in my talking to her brutally about it a month or so ago, she didn't seem opposed to, to it. And I, I think what this hap, what happened is the judge originally was Judge Scott, decades ago, created this policy on his own. It wasn't a big issue then because we didn't have red light cameras. So it was just speeding tickets. Somebody got a speeding ticket and then, you know, people didn't, I don't think people even realized it or very few did. I'm not sure why that policy was, why, why he put twenty-five. I don't, no one seems to really know. A lot of cities don't have an age restriction. A few do.
Is it within, is it within our role as city council to pass an ordinance and then the judge will be able to follow that ordinance as passed?
Yes, you could do that.
Okay, so we could still have that discussion?
Yeah, we would put them-
I did, I did speak with her and I'm not lying.
But there's seven of us up here. I would like to hear from the judge.
Well-
I personally would.
Well, I-
Is there other folks maybe want to?
Point of order. Sir, do we have a motion on the floor? I'm sorry, that was unclear.
She's allowing for this discussion. I, just anecdotally, there's no, no evidence, but I just feel like so many of them are people who have lived their life and driven well and never gotten a ticket and, and got a ticket because these red light cameras. And I know, I know it's not exact, but I think the notion of the diversion restricted to age seems to be something that was just created just because. And it's, as the city attorney pointed out, very, a lot of cities have diversion regardless of age. And I think it's time to, to pursue that. And I think it would go a long way towards some of the angst that has been created over these, the red, red light cameras.
Mr. Mayor, may I offer a solution?
Yes.
If the, if the judge is not opposed to it, which it sounds both from the city attorney and from Counselor Newton that that's the case, would you let me have a word with her and she might very well unilaterally change her policy, which would not require any ordinance?
Because it was never put in place by ordinance in the first place, right?
Right.
I, I beg to differ because a policy is different than an ordinance. I, I would not count on a policy being enforced.
Counselor Van Jemlin?
I, I would tend to concur with, with Counselor McLeod. I think that the, the way to do this most concretely is, is to adopt an ordinance. And so I'm going to, I move that we ask staff to, you know, put together a draft ordinance, removing the age restriction or, I mean, even just establishing any ordinance, I guess, for, to have a diversion program that then is, is enshrined in ordinance. And then the diversion program is something that's established by council and is, is written into our municipal code.
We can do that right now, too.
But I, we, we, why wouldn't we want to hear from the judge?
I'm still making a motion.
Sorry.
Um, the, and, and to have, you know, the, the normal like memo with the impact statement that we get and to invite the judge to, I'm going to leave this open-ended because I want to be respectful of her schedule, a future council meeting and then have that presented to vote on the, the full council.
I can support that. Yes, Judge, question here first.
Um, you said limiting the age restriction, is the age restriction sixteen? Did you say no limit?
No, it's twenty-five years.
What I'm saying is you want somebody who's, I don't know, joyriding at thirteen, clearly you're not going to, so I think we should do it.
Totally different thing, like that's like-
Well, what I'm saying is I think-
Class C or Class D.
Yeah, that's like, that's, it's just class DNC, it's not juvenile reckless driving.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure because what you said, no limit, like less-
Really, the only one that would apply for these red light cameras and speeding cameras is the Class D, Class C, because you wouldn't get one of the tickets for red light cameras for a Class D violation because you only get a ticket if you're going eleven miles over. And that's kind of like where there's that issue that I mentioned previously with the placement of that sign. Okay. Where folks are then not seeing-
I think you have a motion.
Yeah, I know, sorry.
And I'll, I'll second that motion, thank you, Counselor Van Jemlin.
I, I did.
Okay, that was seconded?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor say aye?
We can discuss that after we second.
Aye. Do you need more discussion?
We technically should be asking for discussion after every motion is made and seconded.
Yeah.
But it sounded like to me it was done, so.
Well, I just wanted to point a clarification because I, I might be the one writing this ordinance, I don't know. Or maybe the judge will be. So we're talking just about speeding violations, correct? Or we're not talking about like, like I think Counselor McGee said, we're not talking about like reckless driving or anything like that?
Which would not be a Class D or Class E.
So a D or a C violation?
I specifically said D or C violation.
Okay, perfect, okay.
I could not for if you're driving, not a Class A where you're driving fifty miles over the speed limit or even Class B where you're going twenty-one miles over the speed limit where, like I wouldn't want someone that's reckless driving to be able to get off.
The reason I want to talk to the judge is I don't know what a Class C does, she does. I don't know what a Class D does, she does.
I think there's just, yeah, the level, the D being the, the least offensive violation.
They're the least severe.
Um, and the least amount of a ticket. I think, I don't remember a D, I think a C is one sixty-five, a B I think is two sixty-five, and an A is four forty, I believe.
Your honor, may I have a-
Go ahead, yeah.
I'd just like to cool this down a minute. This is another topic that's come up out of the blue with a lot of discussion, a lot of questions, a lot of assumptions, a lot of direction. And I think it's a more prudent path to carefully consider this, put together, do the proper research, put together a staff report, bring it back to the council along with the judge at her convenience, and have a reasonable, calm conversation then rather than right now because a lot of stuff is flying around the room. And I think it, it, it does a better service to the public to have a chance to read what we're talking about here.
That, that's the current motion on the floor, and I also want to say-
Boy, I got, that got lost on me because it was ju, there was too much of this and that and back and forth. And so if that's what's happening, I'm fine with that, but-
Yeah, my only point was to clarify that that's exactly what my motion is intended to offer.
So motions on the table?
You have a second?
We've had discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you. So are you done, Counselor?
That would be it, except for just kudos to Parks and Rec for awesome Fun in the Park events. And love seeing everyone and all the fun, you know, voting things. But yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Uh, yeah. Geez, I wasn't going to say anything, but I guess I finally get a response to Mr. Robinson who's taken off. So for the record, I'll say my comments related to the CET ordinance, which was voted on in December of twenty twenty-four, and it was a five to one vote, and I replaced the one. So by doing the math, I realize Counselor McLeod was new, but she campaigned on affordable housing. So doing a little bit of guesstimate on my part, I figured we had five or six votes. And it's fair to me to say, what Mr. Robinson doesn't understand, he's great at making declarative statements, but just because he comes up here and says things declarative, he doesn't make them accurate. He believes, or he seems to imply that we are judges up here and, and we do do quasi judicial hearings. But we are legislators, we, this is the legislative body of the city, and there are campaigns. And I'm sorry, Mr. Robinson didn't pay attention to my campaign and others' campaign, but I was steadfastly for affordable housing, so it should be no surprise. And that'd be my reply, but it all starts with an actual vote that was five to one. And the changes on the council that happened didn't really change that five. And so that, you know, I do not talk outside of, talk about city-related business outside of council meetings. I followed very closely the changes that the Oregon Government Ethics Commission is wrangling with in terms of a serial meeting. And so, you know, I follow it very closely. And I just dispute totally what Mr. Robinson says. And what I was asking for, going back to that, what I was asking for, and it's my fault, I was trying to get the floor in Roberts Rules of Order. And what I was going to ask, and maybe this isn't appropriate, maybe this isn't part of Roberts Rules of Order, but what I was asking for was a vote of the council at that time to suspend or set aside our rule when I was called out by name. And so I could just reply what I just said, I would even make it shorter at the time. I was just going to tell them that my, that assumption I made that he was reading from was just based on an actual vote. So that, that's, that's what I wanted to say, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Counselor Van Jemlin?
Uh, no new business tonight.
Thank you. Counselor McLeod?
Thank you, sir. So on Monday, I, I spoke of the events that I had been to over the break and the constituent contacts that I had. Tonight, I'll talk about some upcoming things, tomorrow's River Rhythms. Should be a great concert with Don McLean. I'm, I'm going to be there. We also have the Albany Scottish Festival and Highland Games this weekend at Timberland Park, as well as the Northwest Art and Air Festival coming up. I'll be celebrating my birthday weekend there where I'll be both volunteering as a greeter and attending the concert. We also have the Excellence in Downtown Albany Awards and the Oregon Main Street Conference, which I will be attending both of those. Also, based on the disturbing information that we've heard tonight about the cameras in North Albany, I would like to see that conversation continued because I'm in favor of signage that more clearly indicates when each speed limit is enforced. So I just wanted to have that heard, that I would like to see that conversation continued. Additionally, I still have concerns over the execution of the recent public records request. I would like to see a discussion about this on a future agenda. May we add that to the calendar and open session as soon as possible, please? Is that a, is that a yes from the city manager?
Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGee?
Okay, just two things. One, last week I participated in National Night Out with Captain Jerry, and it was really fun. It was my first time, we had a great time. I will definitely be doing it again. It is a lot of work, you are out there talking for a long time, but it was a very pleasurable experience. And secondly, Counselor Smith and I had a date over the break. As you can see, we are twinning tonight because we did plan to wear pink for our awards. But it was really good to have some, some time to just not talk about city business, but whether enjoy some wine flights and talk about travel and just enjoy each other's company. So I appreciate that and thank you, Counselor Smith, for always accepting my invitation to come outside.
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
The only thing I can think to add tonight is that I, in my spare time, I am helping to organize the Women's Caucus presentation at the League of Oregon Cities Conference in Portland in October. We have invited a number of Oregon, notable Oregon women who've served at its statewide office in the past to talk about how they got there, why they went there, and what they, what they have learned that they want to share with the rest of us, regardless of gender, age, or occupation. It should, it will be the last session before the closing keynote on Saturday. So I, for those of you who are attending the conference, I encourage you to stay. You'll be eating breakfast at the same time, so it's probably going to be a captive audience. It will be a very good panel.
And it's close to, close to home, so I can stay all day. I have just a couple of things. I'm really happy to see the Civic Academy. I think that's going to be a really interesting tool and resource for us as city counselors and mayors. I think it's long overdue and I think it's something that's going to benefit the entire city. Next, tomorrow I'll be attending the OMA, Oregon Mayors Association Conference over in Baker City. Wow. Six hour and a half, six and a half hour drive. And then on September tenth, the Lynn Benton, or Lynn YMCA's Veterans Housing Development Groundbreaking, is it September tenth at ten AM? I'd love to have the council, I'd love to have the council join us. And then the Today Habit to Have for Humanity had a groundbreaking here in town, grew turnout. So it's their building two affordable homes that will be permanently affordable. So we're excited about that. And I filmed some commercials for the upcoming Mushroom Festival and had a great time. And I'll be posting the bloopers as well. And so with that, I will then turn over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have is, is to correct something that was mentioned earlier tonight, and that is that one of the, one of the gentlemen from Business from the Public said that he doubts that we can track revenue from enforcement and expenditures paid on automated enforcement. And that's just, that's not correct. We, we can do that. There is no separate fund, but we can, we can do that tracking and, and do, do the tracking. And that's all I have.
Thank you. So now we will, the city council will meet an executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by a governing body to carry on labor negotiations in accordance with ORS one nine two dot six six zero dot sub paragraph eight, two, sub paragraph D. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other participants must exit. Online audience members may be moved to a waiting room. When council returns to open session, staff will readmit them to the remainder of the, from the remaining in the waiting room to rejoin the meeting. In-person audience members must leave the council members, chambers and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, staff will open the doors and you may rejoin the meeting. Representative, representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in executive session. I now recess the executive session. Let's do that before I recess, ten minutes. Anybody else got to go? Rest, rest, buddy.
Executive session at 8:12 PM. City Recorder killed it. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, August 27th at 20:25 at 6 PM. And then the next meeting after that will be Monday, September 8th. We have a holiday in between. 2020 is for a work session at 4 PM. And I'll adjourn the meeting. I'll see you guys on the other side.